Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting for March 27th, 2023. I have a motion going to executive session to discuss matters specific to tenure and custodial negotiations.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have a motion, go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, opposed? Alright, good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education Meeting, March 27th, 2023. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by some of our Mohansec students, and then remain silent, standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Mohansec students, that was the best pledge we've had all year.
That was great.
Alright, we're gonna start with good news, Ron?
Yes, and again, it's better than good news, we have great news. It's always great when Mohansec is here. I just want to take a moment to first acknowledge the Mohansec staff who are here tonight. Thank you so much for your dedication, it was a long day, you're here and I really appreciate you coming out and being part of this board meeting. It's always an honor for us to showcase the great work that our students are doing and the great work that they're doing in your classrooms, so my thanks to you for being part of this evening. I also just want to take a moment to say thank you to the parents and families for coming out as well. It's a long day, you all had long days, it's a Monday night, you have lunches to make, baths to take, bedtimes to get ready for, and some homework to do. We totally understand it and we do appreciate you making the time to be here to participate, to celebrate your children, because that's what we're here for, is to celebrate your children. So, parents, thank you so much for being part of this evening, it's always so special for our Board of Education and for our community to be able to see the good work happening in our school buildings, the great work that your children are doing. So, parents, thank you so much for being here in attendance to celebrate your children. And students, I cannot wait to hear all about the E-Team work that you're doing. I am excited, I've heard some really, really good things about your presentation tonight, so for our board and for members of our community who are watching this at home, the presentation this evening is a multi-faceted writing and E-Team unit, so as, I'm so grateful to the board for their investment and belief in our E-Team approach to teaching and learning. This evening, we get to see some of the great work happening in that E-Team genre, of course, with literature as the foundation of the work that we do in E-Team. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Berry, Mohansec school principal, to the podium to open the presentation.
Thank you Dr. Hatter, good evening everyone. It is my pleasure and honor, on behalf of the second grade students, faculty and staff, to welcome you to Mohansec's good news presentation. The students are so excited to present their work and share their learning with you. Thank you, parents, for being here this evening and for your continued support and involvement. Thank you for sharing your precious children with us each day. A huge thank you to Mrs. Fromer, Mrs. Dable, and the second grade team for all of their good work, time, and energy that they gave to this worthwhile learning experience. I now turn the presentation over to Mrs. Dable and our students, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry, good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Emerling, Mrs. Sanfilippo, Mrs. Carbone, members of the Board of Education, parents, staff, and students. My name is Antonella Dable, I am a second grade teacher and one of the teacher coordinators here at Mohansec. I'm delighted to be here tonight as a proud second grade teacher, along with my second grade colleagues, our librarian, Mrs. Roper, and library CTA, Mrs. Samfordino, our art teacher, Mrs. McCloth, Mrs. Yates, our E-Team CTA, and our grade two students, as we share the work of a combined writing and E-Team unit that took place between January to mid-February. To help me kick off the presentation, I'd like to introduce one of our second graders who will give you a brief overview of our unit and the incredible work from all of our second graders.
Hi, my name is Dane Hassan-Jacki from Mrs. Lann's class. I bet you are thinking of a person that can just send a text, an email, or pick up the phone and make a quick call. Why are you learning about letter writing? Tonight, we will show how letter writing improves our conversation, social, and handwriting skills, and teaches us what we need to know about the structure of how we write letters. You see, letter writing is an important job. Everyone has to write letters at some point. Letters just say thank you, to send an invitation, letter to persuade someone, give you opportunity, you give your opinion, to even say we are sorry for important reasons, to write letters.
Hi, my name is Ariana Egan from Mrs. Lann's class. In our class, we read the book called The Day That the Crayons Quit. In this book, the main character named Duncan just wants to cover, but he opens his crayon box to find only words, letters from unhappy crayons. Some crayons were sad because they used too much and some not enough. In our class, we wrote letters sharing our opinions about our favorite crayons and why they should not quit. Duncan's box, first we gave our opinions, then gave the reasons and examples why, and lastly, we stated our opinions as we finished our letters.
Hi, my name is Violet Eisenberg from Mrs. Lambert's class. The fun of sending and receiving letters is exciting to everyone. There is something special about putting letters into the postbox and then having letters delivered by the mail carrier. The brightly colored stamps seeing your name on the envelope and knowing that inside is a long-awaited letter from a friend or a member of a family. It shows someone cares and has taken time to sit down and think about you. Handwritten letters have something special and unique about them. You could take time to think about what you're gonna say. You could even, you could read them again and again and even put it away so you could recall a memory many years from now. You may not know this, but our school has its very own mail system called WeDeliver. Each child and staff member in our school has an address that you could access through our WeDeliver directory. Each floor of the school has a street, street name, and each room has a number, just like your house on your street. We have streets or floor names like Kindness Court, Friendly Way, and Best Boulevard. For the last few months, staff and students have been writing or receiving letters. We, as second graders, have the opportunity to work at the post office. We, we, we had to first apply for the position we wanted, next we were interviewed by parent volunteers to see what was the best role for us. Some of the positions were things like supervisor, carrier, address clerk, baser, sorter, or even postmaster. We wore special uniforms like we are wearing now to, to show that we are, work hard if you see us in the hallways.
Hi, my name is Grace Stump from Mrs. Miola's class. At the beginning of the unit, we talked about different types of letters that we have seen or read, which were letters written to friends, which were formal letters from a business or to a business. We noticed the features or characteristics that made formal and informal letters different. I've read many books that showed us examples of these differences too. We were so inspired by our reading and mentor texts that each of our second grade classes decided to reach out to future readers by writing them a letter to share our opinions about our favorite books in different categories. In our class, our focus was on looking at books with favorite characters. First, we needed to read many books. We had to narrow down our search and four favorite characters kept popping up. Arnie the Donut, Dexter the superhero, Flat Stanley, and Dog Man. We all shared our opinions about our favorite characters, but more importantly, reasons why it was our favorite. We made our writing stronger, more good, and more convincing by using transition words or phrases, like for example. As you can see, another example is this helped our reader get a better understanding of our opinions and supporting thoughts using specific evidence from our books.
Hi, my name is Amelia Stephen from Mrs. Lambert's class. In our class, we looked at and discussed the illustrations of books. We looked closely at the books and formed opinions about the pictures. The illustrations enhanced the story and made our story more interesting to look at. For example, whenever a nominee was in story ducks, the heart of a hero, one student said, "The pictures look like a comic book, I think that's cool." Another nominee was dear Mrs. LaRue. One student stated, "The pictures are lined with detail and you can clearly tell the real world from what the main character Ike thought in his head." Another nominee was the book The Day the Crayons Quit. We loved how the illustrator drew pictures from a specific crayon's colors perspective. Our winner was Tacky the Penguin. We read numerous stories from the author Helen Lester. Tacky the Penguin was a favorite because the illustrator made our main character Tacky stand out. He was unique and he was not like all the other penguins. He wouldn't walk like everyone, dress like everyone, or sing like the other penguins. One of my classmates said, "The book has the most hilarious illustration because Tacky marched in the wrong order five times."
Hi, my name is Alessandra Victoria from Mrs. Seldudy's class. Our class focused on nominating a favorite book series. During independent and buddy reading, we read many books within different series. As a class, we narrowed it down to our top four nominees, which were Dog Man, Dragon Masters, Bad Guys, and Mighty Robots. We wrote letters to our classmates stating our opinions. We learned that in our reading, we needed to retell parts of the book with strong examples and evidence to help a reader understand our opinion of why we thought that was the best series to read. This is my letter why I thought Dragon Master is the best series. Dear to J.S., the best series I've ever read is Dragon Masters. I love the pictures, even when they have no color. One picture has a poison dragon and a fire dragon attacking each other with poison and fire. Another reason Dragon Master is a great book is because action always pops out of nowhere. I liked that once a dangerous dragon popped out of nowhere and tried to attack a castle. I liked that the characters are kind and sometimes rough. A boy named Drake and a girl named Rory were arguing about not going to the parade in the king's parade in book four. That is why Dragon Master is the best series book. Your friend Alessandra. After reading the letters about our top four nominees, we voted on our favorite book series, and the winner was Dog Man.
Hi, my name is Landon Prime from Mrs. Dable's class. We read many mentor texts that have formal letters within a story. We noticed that the features were different from informal letters. We write to friends. These formal letters are sometimes known as business letters. They are written in a more formal style, for example, instead of starting with to whom or it could start to, to whom it may concern. Our class focused on nominating favorite author. We read various books written by these authors. We noticed that all the authors had a different style and craft in their writing. Mo Willems uses a lot of speech bubbles. Dave Toki loves to write graphic novels. Helen Lester writes fictional stories with a message at the end of the story. And Kevin Hankey uses mostly mice as his main characters. Each of us had our own opinions as to why we liked a particular author. For example, one friend said that in her opinion, Helen Lester was the best author because she teaches us lessons through her story, and it's okay to be different. One example is in the book Fragility. The main character is very sensitive, but learns that if you make a mistake, no worries, mistakes are part of learning.
Hi, my name is Colin Ryan from Mrs. Banks' class. We learned that as writers, we need to write with the reader in mind. We had to write as if we were talking to the reader. Another thing we did was use a strategy like backing up our opinions with strong examples from our book. Our class nominated four books in the category of books that make us laugh. We nominated four funny books because they made us laugh out loud. We spent some time drafting letters to share our opinion as to why that book would be the best under this category. We even used the stories to help us find sophisticated words to make our letter sound more convincing to the reader. For example, in my letter, I wrote arrogant instead of bossy, greedy instead of selfish. The winner is Dog vs. Cat. It was the funniest book because it made us laugh out loud in many parts, and a funny surprise ending that made us laugh so much that we rolled around holding alley berries.
Hi, my name is Carlos Wong from Mr. Dwan and Mrs. Duranzo's class. In our class, we learned that writers use details and strong evidence as a way to persuade their readers. We learned that using quotation marks in our writing, including parts of the text, helps support our opinions. We also learned that authors often write books to teach us a lesson, and some books have more than one lesson. Our class voted on the book that we felt had the best lesson in a story. The books that we voted on were Tsukis Kamono by Sherry Ugaki, One by Catherine Natachi, The Gift of Nothing by Patrick McDonald, and The Invisible Boy by Tree Dee Ledwood. The book that got the most votes was Tsukis Kamono. Our class determined that the lessons in this story were, don't worry about what other people think or say, be yourself, it is okay to be different, when you do what is right for you, it will make you happy, believe in yourself.
Hi, my name is Justin Melch from Mrs. Miola's class. During the second week in February, we had the chance to visit John C. Hart Library right here in town. This library in our community is filled with many resources, including books, videos, magazines, DVDs, books on CDs, and even video games that you can check out. The children's library is set up into different sections, almost like our categories we chose to write about. Some of those sections are picture books, graphic novels, nonfiction books, and even work. While we were there, we got to hear about different programs the library offers. Did you know you can get your very own library card? At times, we may want a book by a certain author that we do not have in our library. Mrs. Roper, our school librarian, can reach out to the librarians at John C. Hart Library and get us the book to borrow. It is nice to have this partnership between our school and community library.
Hi, my name is Nolan O'Reilly from Mrs. Seldudy's class. Authors and illustrators have different reasons why they write books. For some, the author's purpose is to teach or inform us, for others, it's to share their opinions or persuade readers. And lastly, for some, it is to entertain us. Many of these books are recognized by awards. The prestigious awards are the Newberry and Caldecott Medal. These are given every year to the eligible, eligible for a Caldecott Medal. The book must be published in English in the United States first and be drawn by an American illustrator. An award committee decides on a winner in January or February, voting using a multi-round point system. The committee judges books, books on several curricula to meet Caldecott's goal of recognizing the illustrator. The award winner for 2023 is Hot Dog by Doug Salty. The Newberry Medal is given to the author, the most distinguished contributions to America Liter, Literal for, for children. To take a look at the book called Watercraft written by Andrew Wang, this, this book won multiple awards, including both Caldecott and Newberry medals.
Hi, my name is Addison Tooney from Mr. Dwan and Mrs. Duranzo's class. One of the things that the Caldecott Committee looks at when trying to decide the winner of the year are details in the illustrations. Do these pictures pop? Will children not only love to read the book, but will they want to look at and read it again and again? Illustrators also have to think about making the pictures match the mood of the story. For example, if it is a sad story, the mood is not a happy one, so the illustrator will not use bright colors, but may use dull or muted colors. Lastly, they look at the technique that makes it unique. For example, was it illustrated with crayons? Watercolors are even made with collages. In our class, we spoke a lot about what we might see on book medals with our art teacher, Ms. McCloth. We talked about what special details we could use to design paper medals for best SEL lesson for Tsukis Kamono. Everyone drew and colored their own unique book medals, and each class voted on one design to represent their category using a 3D printer. We then created the medals that you see here, which represent the winners of each of our categories.
Hi, my name is Arifin Maan from Mrs. Banks' class. Choosing a winner in each category was not easy, especially that we all had different opinions. Even though we presented good reasons, strong evidence, and real convincing letters, we did not all agree. Have you and your friend ever had to make decision that was hard to agree on? Maybe you were deciding what to watch on TV, or where to eat. Voting is a fair way to make a decision. Just like may awards given, sometimes a vote is necessary to find a winner. To pick a winner, some classes use tally marks, other a ballot. In doing this, we quickly realized that every vote counted made a difference. If we had twenty-four children in a class, the value of each vote needed to equal twenty-four. We also learned voting is a great way to practice math skills. When we vote, we do things like sort, count, chart, and compare. In our class, Dog vs. Cat won with eleven votes. The rest of the votes were split between the other three books.
Hi, my name is Preston Todd from Mrs. Dable's class. Each class found a different way to celebrate all the nominees and winners of our books. We even rolled out a red carpet dressed up like I have tonight. Choose our favorite in each category and watch as our teachers reveal the winners at the Book Academy Awards Ceremony. So if you're looking for a good read, here are your winners. A book that made us laugh, Dog vs. Cat. The best lesson in the book, Tsukis Kamono. The best illustrations, Tacky the Penguin. The best author, Mo Willems. Best series, Dog Man. The best character, Arnie the Donut. We have brought the winners here tonight if you would like to take a look at them later. Thank you for letting us share our work with you, and before I leave, it looks like you got some mail too.
None of this great work would be, as they're handing out your letters, I'm gonna just quickly share because I'd like to just thank some people that are here, but none of this great work would be possible without the support of our administration, school board, and our teachers that are here tonight, so I'd like to recognize them by asking them to stand. Our second grade teachers, Mrs. Banks, Mrs. Seldudy, Mr. Dwan, Mrs. Duranzo, Mrs. Lampert, Mrs. Lena, Mrs. Miola, our librarian, Mrs. Roper, and library CTA, Mrs. Samfordino, our art teacher, Mrs. McCloth, Mrs. Yates, our E-Team CTA, and Ms. Spooz, Ms. Alloy, Mrs. Redeshi, our classroom CTAs, and Mrs. Potchai, speech teacher. I think I got everyone. We are very fortunate to have such a great team. On behalf of our Mohansec family, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our work with you tonight, and we have our book award winners and the medals right there if you want to take a look at them later. Thank you.
That was incredible. That was absolutely incredible. I told you before, which you already know, your children are amazing. They absolutely are amazing, and teachers, just thank you because this is a heavy lift. It's a really heavy lift, and you make it look easy, but we know it's not. So I really do appreciate you embracing this concept of E-Team, bringing it into your classrooms, it's one more thing that you have to do. There are no New York State learning standards on E-Team, it's something that you just do because you're such great professionals, and thank you for that. Boys and girls, you were terrific, that was so impressive, you were so great. And to the parents, thank you for sharing your children with us, you're their first teacher, we cherish the time that we have with them, but we appreciate the partnership. What I'll tell you is I saw a lot more than E-Team and I saw a lot more than literature on display, and literature underpins all the E-Team that we do. I saw a seven and eight-year-old standing at a podium, comfortable, speaking in front of a room full of adults, and that is one of the skills that we really try to instill in our students here, and the teachers do a great job, and your children do a great job. But when you think about that skill and how many of us would feel comfortable standing at that podium, addressing a room full of adults who are watching intently on every word that we say, it's not an easy lift, and your children made it look easy, and they did such a great job. So it's more than just what you see in terms of the learning standards and the ELA and the literature, and while I have a moment, I do want to acknowledge Mrs. Emerling and Ms. Chesser for their work in shepherding in some of the great literature that we have here. But this was just more than writing, it was more than E-Team. I saw confident and happy second graders here presenting their learning to a very proud audience. So, boys and girls, I am so proud of you, well done, and it does make somebody feel great to get a letter. Grace gave me a letter before we started, and this will go prominently in my office because it is absolutely beautiful, so thank you for my letter, and I can't wait to hang it up in my classroom and I'll send a picture over to your teacher tomorrow so you can see where I put it in my office. Alright, with that said, is there anything that you'd like to?
No, I just want to thank the entire Mohansec staff, and the students are amazing. The number of books that you've read are incredible, so we're so proud of you, so thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight.
Any other comment?
I just want to say thank you for my letter. I have to admit that your handwriting at this age is a lot better than what I have. It's become very, you know, squiggly with the computer, so I'm very proud of your handwriting, and I love seeing some of my favorite books being featured. I loved, I still love the Dog Man series and The Day the Crayons Quit, so thank you for sharing. So thank you for sharing your joy with the books, and I love hearing whether we deliver. Thank you.
So we have a whole nother meeting. We're actually honoring several high school students. But I was in your seat once, too. So I'm thinking about bedtimes, lunch, snack, and all that other thing that we have to, all the things we have to get done. So what I'm going to ask, just in sensitivity to what your afternoon or your evening plans are, we're going to just take a quick one, one and a half-minute recess while we transition to the high school presentation. Parents, if you choose to leave, you're welcome to do so. At this point, I would ask that you would exit through that back door and that you would do so, just understanding that we have another presentation coming on, and we want to give them the same courtesy and respect that was afforded to you. So if you do decide to leave, have a great evening. If you'd like to stay, we have a great presentation coming up from the high school on students, great budget presentation that I'll be delivering as well. But if not, have a great evening, and thank you for attending this evening. Okay, I think we're ready to resume. This evening, I have the distinct pleasure of momentarily, in a moment, I'll be inviting Mr. DeGeneres to the podium to present some high school students who are being recognized for some pretty extraordinary accomplishments. The students we're going to hear about tonight were originally set to be honored on Monday, March thirteenth. However, there was inclement weather that resulted in a, just a more brief meeting. So we weren't able to honor our students at that time. But tonight, I think our community will be amazed, as I am amazed, by our students and just how wonderfully they represent Yorktown, not just our school district, but our town. They are so well-rounded, which Mr. DeGeneres will share in a moment. And parents, I just want to thank you as well. I know I acknowledged the other parents in the room, but please know that I'm acknowledging you and all your efforts. You have wonderful children, and you have done just a remarkable job. They're so well-rounded. They have a love for not only the academics, but there are at least one or two other genres within our school community that they really appreciate, whether it's athletics, whether it's the arts, the performing arts, musical arts. Your children are amazing. I don't know if you hear it enough, but you'll hear it one more time. Your children are amazing, and thank you for sharing them with us. At this time, I'd like to invite Yorktown High School Principal, Mr. DeGeneres, to the podium to begin the presentation. And Mrs. Garrett as well.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Good evening, Mrs. Carbone, members of the Board of Ed, and our district administrative team. I'd like to first thank everybody for adjusting their schedule, families and the students. I know that you're incredibly busy, so to set your schedules back two weeks. I appreciate you being here tonight and making that adjustment. Welcome, parents and students from the class of 2023. Congrats. And again, as Dr. Hatter said, I would echo that. Well done raising wonderful young adults. They're impressive in every manner, and I'll speak to that in one second. I'd like to also recognize to my right our assistant principal at the high school, Ms. Garrett, who's here with me tonight, will present some awards. I've always appreciated being here and highlighting the terrific Yorktown High School students that we have and their many accomplishments. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing and recognizing nine amazing and accomplished seniors. I've always cherished our philosophy of educating the whole child. As principal, I'm proud of that and wholeheartedly believe in it. A brief history. We've gone back into our data system, and I'm not sure if we've ever had nine students with a 100-plus weighted GPA. I'm here fifteen years, so went back fifteen and then some. We don't believe we've ever had that in my time and years prior. So I'm not going to confirm or deny that this could be our largest group. These students have taken rigorous courses, amassed countless hours of service to others in school and out in the community and well beyond. They've performed in shows and concerts. They're athletes, leaders of clubs, and students. Let's go back to the beginning when they started high school as eighth graders here. They were accelerated students as eighth graders in the fall of 2018. They then arrived as full-time high school students in September of 2019. At that point, traditional high school learning stopped in the early second semester of their ninth-grade school year. Virtual and hybrid learning became the new norm before we ultimately returned to traditional teaching and learning. For these nine students to excel through unprecedented times is simply incredible and impressive. It's my honor to alphabetically introduce to you our members from the class of 2023, and I'll also add some extra awards and announce one that we may not even know about yet that just came in. So our first student for academic excellence is Naomi Banner. Recently finished a tour as Little Red Riding Hood. Into the woods. Next, Rachel Govanthor, academic excellence. Academic excellence, William Grossman. Academic excellence, Krishna Kumunan. Academic excellence, Clara Kuntz. Academic excellence, Brayden Reynolds. Academic excellence, Jenna Scanlon. Academic excellence, our class of 2023 salutatorian and just recently named a National Merit Scholarship recipient, Daniel Sheenan. Academic excellence and our class of 2023 valedictorian, Ashley Song. We're going to keep them here so they feel really awkward for a few more minutes. Give parents a chance to take and a nice picture with Dr. Hatter, maybe Mrs. Carbone, the board, however you want to take a big photo, and give parents an opportunity to take those. I would like to say, I could spend hours up here talking about their resumes and how accomplished they are and how giving they are. And the giving piece is huge when they can be fortunate to be raised in families that they are loved by, supported by, and a credit to you as parents and a round of applause for you because you raise wonderful young adults who are very giving. And I look forward to the end of the year, celebrating all the many things that we have to celebrate, the current year seniors, as we get deeper into the school year. So congratulations.
So before we go over to take pictures, just, Dan, I just heard the news. Congratulations. Very, very well done. That is very, very prestigious and very rare. So that is just great news we look forward to celebrating. That's absolutely terrific. And to all of our students, congratulations to you. And for each student up here, there's something else that you have done that's remarkable. William, there was a great story on you in the newspaper just this past Thursday. I just wrote you a letter. It's in the mail. And your actors and actresses and your wonderful singers and athletes and musicians. I am just so in awe of all that you are to this point. And I'm just sure that you're destined for great things and just could not be more proud of you. So congratulations to you all. Heartfelt congratulations.
No, absolutely congratulations. You know, what's interesting tonight is we got to see students on the beginning of their journey and the students ending their journey. And it's so nice to see the progression and where you guys all wind up. And we are so very proud of you. And we just know there's only good things going to happen in the rest of your lives. So congratulations to all of you.
Shall we take a photo with the recipients? Okay. So on the other side of the coin, the other group of parents certainly wanted to make it home for bedtimes and bedtimes and lunch prep. You all have AP homeworks. You have different assignments that you have to do. So the board's going to take just a very brief recess to give you the opportunity to exit if you'd like. If you'd like to remain, please know you're welcome to do that as well. But if you do decide to leave, have a safe ride home. Thank you.
Are up to public comment on agenda-related items? Did anybody sign up? No? Okay, so then we're going to go right to your superintendent's report, Ron.
Okay, thank you so much. Before I go into the two presentations that are planned for this evening, I just wanted to provide the community and certainly our board with an update on some items that were discussed in previous meetings. The first of which is a traffic study that we had commenced on the Yorktown High School campus. Anyone who has dropped off their child during peak arrival time at the high school, certainly pickup time, high school and middle school. It's the campus that I'm referring to. You'll recognize that there's a great deal of traffic. So we worked with our partners, with the regional safety team of PNW BOCES, to have a traffic study done on our campus. That report was just submitted to me. There are some great suggestions. We're still digesting those suggestions, understanding those suggestions. I think there are some really low-hanging fruit that we can pick and that we can really get to work on immediately. And then there are some larger-scale considerations. But again, we've received the report. First of all, we had the study done. We've received the report. Now we're just analyzing the findings and determining what's feasible, what's not feasible. So more information will follow, but I wanted to provide our community with an update on that nonetheless. And at the, one of the last meetings, not the last meeting, but the meeting prior to that, we had discussed a energy performance audit where ConEd Solutions, and ConEd Solutions is now changing names as they've been purchased by a larger company, was performing an energy audit. We have a very high-level report back from them. Not as much detail on that report. What we'll do is we'll continue to work with Mr. Kane over at ConEd Solutions to really refine his proposal, attach some numbers to the proposals, timelines to the proposal, and we'll certainly invite him to present to the board and to the community at an upcoming meeting. But I wanted to provide our community with those updates nonetheless. So at this time, if it's okay, I'm going to make my way over to the podium so that I can deliver the both presentations that are prepared. So this first presentation is a discussion on pre-kindergarten. If you recall, and I know you recall because many of you were on the board that made the transition from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten, I tell you, I thank you for that because that was a great investment in our children, a great investment in our schools. Of late, there has been a lot of discussion around pre-kindergarten and whether introducing a pre-K program would be feasible for a school district, not just across the state, but across the country. In previous years, our allocation was such that it wasn't really feasible for us to consider introducing a pre-K program as the costs would far exceed the reimbursement from the state. However, in the budget tentative, the governor's tentative budget, the numbers are more favorable. The allocations are certainly more favorable to school districts, especially school districts that are looking to start up a pre-K program. And in my estimation, that merits, at the very least, a discussion or further exploration. So just a high-level overview on this slide, and I know you have it in front of you, but for those at home who are observing, our allocation from the state is just over a million dollars. Now, there are two components to that allocation. There are startup costs, and we're seeking clarification from the state as to what costs are reimbursable under their regulations. I had an initial call on Friday. There weren't many answers to the questions that I posed, so I have another call coming up on Wednesday with another member of the department, someone a little more in a management role. What we do know is that the allocation is $5,400 per student. That means that for the five-hour day, the reimbursement to school districts would be $5,400. And districts have a few options on how they can implement a pre-K program. And I'll speak to those three options in a moment. Right now, our cohorts in kindergarten through 12th grade are approximately 250 children. We don't have the funding for 250 children. I'm not suggesting that a pre-K program in its first year would yield 250 children. I'm just using 250 as a point of reference for our school district because that's ultimately where our cohort seems to settle, plus or minus 10%. So therefore, a lottery system may be something we would need to consider, certainly until the funding matches the enrollment. With regard to the continuation of funding, one of my biggest reluctance has been, my greatest reluctance has been space in our buildings, but also will the funding continue? And there are no assurances that are provided to us that once we introduce a program, the funding will be there on an annual basis. And that's certainly something that we have to be mindful of and certainly follow up with at the state level. The program is for four-year-olds. It's not a 3K program. There are some districts, none in the immediate vicinity, but there are some districts that offer a 3K program. This would be a true pre-K program for four-year-old children. There are so many studies that speak to the efficacy of pre-K and the overall benefit, not just from an academic perspective, but from so many other facets of the learning experience. And later, in the next presentation, I'll speak about the whole child. And there are so many benefits that speak to the, there are so many studies that speak to the benefit of pre-K. With regard to some other benefits to bringing a pre-K program within to our district, there are so many wonderful pre-K programs in our community. My children are graduates of one of those programs. There are a lot of really good ones. They're all different. So part of the appeal for us in a kindergarten through 12th grade setting is providing a consistent experience for children coming into our school district. The curriculum would be the Yorktown Central School District-designed pre-K curriculum. We would create the curriculum, and whomever, whether it's internal or a third-party provider, would deliver that curriculum. The instructional resources would be our school district's instructional resources that would be implemented. So there would be great consistency across the program and continuity vertically. So we have that horizontal continuity across the pre-K experience, and then we'll have that vertical articulation of our curriculum. There are essentially three options that we have. And we don't need a decision at this point because I don't think I have enough information to provide you so that you can make a decision at this point. I think we need to gather a little more information. I'll speak to that in a couple slides from now. But essentially, we have three options before us. We can decline the funding and forego a pre-K program. We can accept the funding and bring the program internal, where we operate the program. What I will share, there are a lot of considerations. They're on the slide. Our viewing audience can read. Our viewing audience can read the considerations, so I won't go through each of them. But we certainly do have space limitations, and we do have cost limitations. We have a tax cap environment that we're operating in, and the needs of our students are such that the tax cap is being borne by the K-12 needs. So introducing a pre-K program that we house internally would have a budgetary impact. However, if we were to introduce a program with a third-party provider, where we would put out an RFP, solicit third-party providers who would accept the state reimbursement, the cost to our district to bring in a pre-K program would be minimal at that point. And it makes the adoption of a pre-K program certainly more viable and more sustainable for us. So I'll speak to option three, which is the option that has garnered my attention because we certainly don't want to leave a million-dollar allocation on the table and decline that. So it's at least worth further exploration. The second option of taking the program in-house, we have turned this sideways, upside down, inside out, looking at all angles of the feasibility of bringing the program internally. Our teachers are teaching the program in our school buildings. And there were many, too many, insurmountable obstacles in our way, space and budget. However, that third-party provider is something that many school districts within the region have turned to and have used it successfully. And it's something that I'd like to continue to explore. What we would need to do is put out a request for proposal. We would need to survey and canvas providers, not just within the town of Yorktown, but within the county, even in neighboring counties. We would have third-party providers respond. We would certainly want the facility to be located within the Yorktown Central School District catchment area so that there, the interface that we have and the connection that we have and the oversight that we have of the program would be a little more seamless if they're locally nearby, we can pop in at any point. They would have to be willing to accept $5,400 for the year for a five-hour program. If a parent were interested in before care or after care, that would be something that they would arrange with the provider directly. But the five-hour pre-K program would be fully paid for by the state. If we do a lottery system, it would be completely random in a lottery random number generator-type situation where it would be completely random. And ultimately, there are a couple of other considerations that we would not have to account for if we work with a third-party provider. Transportation would not need to be provided, and school lunch would not need to be provided. So those are honestly consistent with how most pre-Ks operate at this point anyway. We have some next steps. So I'm gonna be the first to tell you that I don't have all the answers at this point. In fact, I have more questions than I do answers. We're doing our due diligence. So one of the things we have to wait on, and it's just a function of time, is the final governor's budget. We need to see where the aid runs settle. We need to do our due diligence in having those conversations with representatives from SED to just better understand what costs are reimbursable, what part of that million-dollar allocation will actually go toward tuition, how many slots do we actually have? I also think surveying the community would have some value. Once we understand what the parameters are that we're working within, I'd be interested to hear what the interest is within our community. Is there a demand? Is there a need for the program? And then certainly, if we decide to go this route, we'd have to create and distribute the request for proposals to some of the local organizations with the understanding that we would want the program housed within our school district catchment area, certainly within the town, but preferably within the school district catchment area. Until the survey determines interest, the RFP will determine our capacity. So do we have the capacity to meet the interest within our community? So those are some of the next steps. I'm happy to take any questions that there are. I have a list of running questions already, furniture, curriculum costs, some of the upfront fees that we have to pay, some of the administrative costs that we have to pay. Are those factored into startup costs? Is there a percentage that can be taken for the third-party provider? Are there any other limitations with regard to a lottery system if we decided that we needed to go that route? So there are still several questions that I have. I have a conference call scheduled, I believe it's 8:30 Wednesday morning, with someone from SED. So I'm looking forward to having that conversation, and certainly my team will be with me to participate in that conversation. But it's certainly worth exploring to see if this is something that we can bring to our school district. I believe it would be great for our school community, but I'm certainly cognizant of the budget piece. If we do pursue the third-party option, there's not an impact to the budget, there's not a material impact to the budget, which is why I separated the pre-K presentation from our budget presentation because the two are not necessarily related. Should we decide we want to take the program in-house, we'll certainly explore that, but there would be some greater budgetary limitations that we'd have to work within. So I share that information with you. I'm happy to have, answer any questions, or not answer any questions, but take down any questions that you have and add them to my list for Wednesday morning, and Ms. Sammerling or Ms. Sam Filippo can add those notes to, if you have them.
Thank you. I'll start. Lisa, do you have questions?
I have a lot of questions, but I think it's probably best to wait till after your call on Wednesday, and then let's go back to talk about it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
One of the questions that I think we can answer now is, how do we go about surveying the community at this point?
So we would work, so right now, we have a couple of things that we can leverage. We have our student database. So that can work in one of two ways. That can work with either parents who have children in that circumstance, or the parent knows someone who may not necessarily be on our email system that they can share. We'll encourage both ways. We also have a list of new residents to our district as of July of 2021. We'll certainly include them in this survey as well because they moved to our community within the last almost two years. They may not necessarily have children within the school district, but they're here, and so they're not necessarily in our ecosystem where when we send out the alerts, they receive them, but we know who they are, so we'll certainly reach out to them. I will ask the town to also put something out. We can work with the newspapers to also put something out because the audience that we're trying to reach may not necessarily be the audience that are receiving our snow calls or the other messages that we send.
Great, thank you.
For sure.
I just wanna say, I think the next steps that you have listed, they make total sense in, you know, just the next sequence of things to do. And you hit a lot of the questions I have in your question bank, so I know it's on your mind. We would, of course, love an update after your call this week. And then I think comes the next layer of the RFP. We wanna make sure that the curriculum, the staffing, it's meeting, you know, what our children are used to, as though we were running it in-house. But that comes after your call and after April 1st, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Bye.
I guess, you may have answered this, but what was the allocation from the state of just over a million dollars? How many students was that? So the allocation in total is 1-0-1-5-200. The numbers that we're getting are conflicting. So there's one number that tells me that we have dozens and dozens and dozens of spots, but there's another space in that allocation that tells me we have 38 seats. So I'm trying to reconcile those two numbers because they're not even close to each other. One says we have over 180, the other says we have 38. I'm more inclined to think that we have 38, but that's one of my first questions. In fact, that was in my email originally to the state. How many spots do we have? I just need to know because I need to understand what our capacity is, what's the target. So as of right now, believe it or not, even that is an uncertainty for us. 38, I believe, is the safe number. However, it could be more.
And then I just wanna clarify, this is outside of the budget because whether we take this money or not, it's not in our budget numbers. It's not in the state aid numbers that we are currently working on within our budget, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So whether we decide this before we adopt the budget or after we adopt the budget, it doesn't make a difference to us?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, all right, then we can await your.
Yes.
Further clarifications.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to transition to the final budget presentation of our series of budget presentations. And I'll be sharing with our board and our community recommendations for consideration in the budget. Please know that these are just that, they're recommendations. After this presentation, the process formally and officially is turned over to the board. The Board of Education then certainly weighs the recommendations, weighs the needs of the school district, and before they ultimately adopt the budget, may have some follow-up information that they'd like. There may be some other considerations that they would like for the administration to consider, to work through. So that's all part of our process. So this evening, I present the budget to our Board of Education for their consideration. So to date, it's been referred to as the superintendent's budget. This evening, it now becomes the board's budget, and we'll certainly move through any investigation or exploration that the board requests of the administration. So our story continues. Our district has told this beautiful story. We saw some of the great literature that our students were working through in their classes. Our story is just as beautiful. It's a story of second graders doing amazing writing projects and ESTEAM projects, and it's a story of seniors performing so incredibly well in the classroom, on the stage, on the athletic fields, in the gymnasium, in the band room. And our story is centered on our district's vision. And this vision is always aspirational for us. We're always reaching, we're always striving. And I think you saw elements of our vision on display this evening, whether it was through the second-grade presentation or whether it was the recognition of the high school ESTEAM has been at the foundation of what we've done. And I really do say this with all sincerity, ESTEAM has been driven by our teachers, but there's nothing to drive without this Board of Education leading the way first. So I thank our board for their commitment to this work, to ESTEAM, to all of the great things that are happening in our school district. And we can talk about recognitions. I decided to leave the recognitions out of this presentation. All the wonderful awards and acknowledgements, I decided to actually not even mention them because our greatest success doesn't come from being recognized for a blue ribbon like the sign behind us, or even a school of character. It comes from this. It comes from seeing what our children are doing in the classroom. It's so powerful, it's real. These are not fictitious children, they're someone's baby, and they're doing amazing things, whether they're seven or 18. They're someone's baby, and they're doing amazing things, and we're so proud of them. The whole child will always be something that you'll see in my budget presentations. It's so important. And when we meet with new candidates to interview them, whether it's for a teaching job or an administrative job, I often ask, what draws you to Yorktown? Without exception, they cite this idea of the whole child and how committed Yorktown is to the whole child. And they see it from you, they see it from the administration, they go onto our website, they look at the budget presentations, they look at the pictures that are there, and the commitment to the whole child is there. One of my favorite quotes is from Aristotle. Speaks a lot about what we do. We've done some great things. Learning outcomes are tremendous. And the nine children you saw tonight, truth is, we could have brought 30 or 40 children here tonight, and so we could have brought 400 children here to celebrate them. Great things are happening in our school district. 70 co-curricular clubs, 60 athletic teams, theater, dance, chorus, band, orchestra, robotics, science research, there are just so many great things happening. And truth is, five years from now, the thirst and the quest for continuous improvement, this slide will look different because we're always on that journey of getting better and improving what we do. This has been a long process, and now to kind of bring the plane a little closer to the budget development. My thanks to Ms. Sam Filippo and her team for a very thorough and thoughtful process. Every line of that budget was scrutinized, and then it was scrutinized again and again. And my thanks to Ms. Sam Filippo and her team for all of the work that they did in refining the budget to one that I'm proud to present to you tonight. And I'm presenting you the budget, but the truth of the matter is, it's not my vision for this budget, it's a collective vision. Through my words, you're hearing the voices of our principals, you're hearing the voices of our directors, you're hearing the voices of the children that we serve. And I come to you on all of our behalf to share with you what to expect for the 2023-24 budget. So this is a high-level overview. There's an enrollment chart there. It shows a slight anticipated decline in enrollment for the coming school year, but enrollment is just one part of the ledger, it's one part of the conversation. Student needs are the other part of the conversation. And high enrollment with very few student needs, or lower enrollment with high student needs, or somewhere along that continuum in either direction is what this budget aims to serve. There's some information about pension costs and so on, health insurance costs, there will be a modest increase for the coming school year. There are some key components of this budget, there are some major drivers of this budget. And I just want to start, before I go through each of these bullets, by sharing that this budget is tax cap compliant. We will be within the tax cap, tax levy cap, and it's something that we're certainly sensitive to. So as we craft our budgets, the goal here is to strike the most effective balance between providing our students with the programs and services that they deserve. We demand that. And we also want to demonstrate respect and sensitivity to taxpayers. There's no question, it's a difficult inflationary environment, and families are feeling that reality. So our work as an administration is to craft a budget proposal that balances those two factors, meeting the needs of our students and demonstrating a respect and sensitivity for our taxpayers. So first and foremost, all of the programs that we have this year will continue into next year. We're gonna keep class sizes within the Board of Education guidelines. We're looking to introduce some new courses at Yorktown High School. We're excited at some of the ideas that are being shared. One of the ideas is a drone and certification course. That's one that we're very excited to be bringing to our high school. The journey started a while back when we introduced our first engineering course, and that was a major accomplishment for us. And then one course became two, and two courses became a three-course sequence. And after that three-course sequence, we were able to introduce data sciences and really take ourselves to the next level. But as you know, we need to keep getting better. We can't just stop there and say, hey, look at what we've built, this is terrific. We need to look for ways to improve. Drone technology is where it's going. Autonomous aircrafts, the concept of an unmanned air carrier is growing in popularity. That's where the world is going. In fact, in some parts of the world, they're there already, and we're catching up. These are jobs that don't necessarily exist yet, or they're in their infancy, and we're trying to prepare children for careers that are still emerging, still being defined, still being developed. And it's wonderful that our high school has the capacity to do that. So that's one of the areas that we're exploring and budgeting for. Film and literature is another exciting course out of our English department that we're looking to add. And then there are a couple of other courses that we're looking at, one in the sciences and one in sports medicine. After what happened to... After what happened to the Buffalo Bills defensive player, there was a new spotlight shined on athlete health and the importance of intervention in sports medicine, and it's something that has piqued the interest of our students. And as an administration, it's our job to respond to the needs of our students, so we'll be exploring the feasibility of introducing a sports medicine class. We also have some special education additions. The services here are largely IEP-driven, and they meet the needs of our students. And my thanks to Mr. Rosen and his department for all they do. It's not easy to put together a budget that prioritizes student needs, that maintains, that stays within the tax cap, and still comes out with a final product, and he's just, he's terrific at doing this. We still come out with a final product that will work well for our students. There are also some general education positions that we're looking to add, and again, all of these are student-driven, they're enrollment-driven, they're student-need-driven. So on the previous slide, you may have seen the word contingency next to one of the positions. If the need arises, then we haven't finished our CSE season yet in our annual reviews, and we have not finished all of the programmatic pieces that have to go into creating placements for our students for the upcoming school year. So you'll see contingency, and that's just us being fully transparent with our community, it's being fully transparent with the board. We'll await the outcomes of those meetings and make determinations based on the needs of the students. There's an elementary contingency position. In fact, there are two. One is with kindergarten. I've said this often, kindergarten is one of the most challenging class sizes to predict. We're perpetually using the data that we have to just make the best guesses and best estimations that we can. So we look at today's date, March 27th, I actually did this on Friday, March 24th. Spoke to our registrar, I said, how many students are registered at this point? How many meetings do you have in the pipeline at this point? How many did you have registered at this time last year? And you kind of try to make that ratio, okay, at this point, we had 218 registered, and the cohort size was 240. The year prior, how many did we have registered as of March 24th, the year prior to that? And you try to use the data that you have to make the best possible projection, that's an unknown, so that remains a contingency position for us. In some years, you have some really early arrivers to the kindergarten registration process, and in other years, we're registering children at the end of August, and those are the realities, and you don't know until the process is over. Yes, we look at live birth data from five years ago, and we look at all of the other information available to us, but it's still always a moving target. We're looking at Chromebook replacements, we're looking at some technology investments in the way of MacBooks, and as discussed at the last presentation, the price of MacBooks have really come down to the cost of laptops, and those are comparable costs, and so we're able to broaden our options for teachers because the costs have become comparable. There are some additional components, some additional considerations in the budget. Certainly, we want to invest in our music department, that's something that's important, I know that's a priority for our administration, certainly a priority for our Board of Education, looking at instruments and repairs and equipment, and making sure that our music department has the supplies that they need to continue delivering the high-quality program that they deliver. The girls' flag football program, there has been a groundswell, and there has been some great interest, and that's terrific, and we'll look forward to offering that should that interest be sustained. Volleyball, boys' volleyball, a group of students approached us last year, they spoke to me, they spoke to Mr. Barrett about their passion for volleyball, and that there wasn't really an outlet for students to participate in volleyball, boys, to participate in volleyball. They requested that we start a team, and we had, I believe it was 18 individuals who signed up for the team, none of whom were playing another fall sport. These were 18 students who were newly drawn into the athletics program here, and I'm pleased that we were able to offer the opportunity. We didn't offer a JV at the time because we, number one, were not sure about what our varsity roster would look like, but number two, as school districts were just starting programs, many, most did not have JV teams, they were in a similar situation that we were in, having a varsity team and hoping that you can sustain the enrollment. However, as boys' volleyball has grown in popularity, certainly there are more teams, more competition for us to play. We're looking at assistant varsity lacrosse coaches, one boys', one girls'. That would put the number of coaches in line with many of our surrounding school districts, and right now, we're one short, and so we would be in a comparable position. And again, the investment from a dollars and cents standpoint is in the order of a few thousand dollars. We'd be looking at an athletic coordinator, with all of the teams that we've added, with all of the technology that we've added, and my thanks honestly for adding the teams and the technology, the administrative piece of the athletic department has remained unchanged. So the volume has increased, the technology, the complexity has increased, and I do believe that some seasonal support, after-school, it's a stipended position, this is not a full-time position, this is something that someone would receive a coach's salary to be able to assist in the coordination of athletics. This would involve, so I'll share with you that there is a day next week that we have on the same day, there's softball, there's a lacrosse game, there's a baseball, it's either a practice or a game happening, there's a tennis match going on, and then there's another practice on the upper grass field. We have one athletic director, and that athletic director has done a phenomenal job of trying to be present at all of the events, but the reality is, he's one person, and I do believe, we talk about giving our students a service that they deserve, and the administrative support that they deserve. So with four or 500 athletes in the program, having seasonal support, in a given season, four or 500 different children in a given season. Some children play multiple seasons, so that four or 500 is not four or five unique hundred children, four or 500 unique children. And then, looking at a trainer, strength and conditioning coach, whether it's part-time, whether we pare that down a little bit, those are conversations that I think are still going to be had. It's something that I'm certainly mindful of, as the number of athletes increase and at all of the games and activities that go on, there are injuries that take place, whether it's our team or whether it's the visiting team, there are injuries that take place, so the question is, can we do this, how do we deliver it? So again, more discussion to be had, how does that look essentially is what we'll be defining, but we've certainly asked for an allocation for that position. In addition, before I get to the impact, one of the things to consider, it's not on here, but it may be a consideration to either discuss or explore further, or ask the administration to investigate further, is the feasibility of a school resource officer in our elementary schools. Now, we have one at Crompond. Is it something that we can feasibly do? Of course, we have to stay within the tax cap. Is it something that we can feasibly do within the tax cap and have an officer shared between Brookside and Mohansick? This past year, we introduced an SRO at Crompond, and that has been really successful, and the SRO has participated in so many events, and so many drills and trainings at Mohansick and Brookside, and my thanks to him because he is just finding a way to be in three places at one time, which is incredible. But we hear about the news, and we hear about the reality of the world, and sometimes that reality is not a pretty one. And so I will just add that that may be an item for consideration, I didn't put it in my presentation, but it just may be something that, that's maybe worthy of a discussion or a further investigation. The ultimate impact of the budget is here on the screen. We have a budget-to-budget increase, and that's at the top of the screen for those who are viewing at home. However, the tax rate change is what impacts people directly on their tax bill, and we anticipate that the town of Yorktown, which makes up about 97% of our tax base, would face a 1.78% increase on their tax rate, and the neighboring communities, based on their equalization rates, are there as well. Now, how do we go from a budget-to-budget increase of over 6%, an inflationary environment where it is, 6% to 8%, health insurance costs are going up, fuel for the buses is going up, heating oil is going up? And when I say it's going up, not currently increasing, but it's higher than it has been historically. We have paid in recent years far less than what we're paying now. So I'm not suggesting that on March 27, the trajectory is pointing up on diesel futures, but what I'm saying is, our costs that we've incurred and the costs that we have to budget are higher than where they've been. One of the ways we've been able to offset the costs of foundation increase, for foundation aid increases, there was legislation that was passed that made foundation aid whole in school districts. Our school district, according to the formula, was grossly underfunded for many years. There was a recalibration and legislation that promised school districts would be made whole on their foundation aid, wherein the second year and final year of that foundation aid increase, the increase is just over $4 million. Now, the first 2.65 is offsetting some of the expenditures from the prior year. We had to build those into the budget. We had the foundation aid increase, however, we also had the benefit of federal grants that we were able to leverage, and I'm really proud of how our district utilized those federal grants. We really invested in a lot of the clinical professionals and mental health professionals to support our students' social-emotional learning and social-emotional needs and mental health needs. And we can't let those positions go, because our students are still recovering from the pandemic, our students are still in need of clinical support in our buildings, and we need to have that. So we are incorporating those positions that were in a federal grant into our budget. So that's one of the pieces where the new foundation aid, the newly realized foundation aid can help to mitigate those costs. There is a QR code, so if there's more than a 10% increase, we're required as a school district to survey our community, to hear their thoughts on areas of increase. Now, it's a limited spectrum of areas where we can spend those monies, but they're all included in the survey, and we'd love to hear our community's feedback. I believe that we've touched on just about every area in this budget, but I'd love to hear what our community has to say. And we're required to gather that feedback as part of accepting the money, accepting the foundation aid increase and accepting the federal grant. So there's a survey, it'll be posted to our website, it's a QR code, nice and easy to do. The survey is very brief, very quick for someone to complete, it provides them with the opportunity to give us their feedback, their input on where foundation aid monies are spent, and we welcome that. And it also provides a narrative component, where if there's something that maybe is not captured in the survey, and someone has an idea and they'd like to share that, it provides that opportunity as well. And it also fulfills the requirement that we have with the state for the 10% foundation aid increase. So I encourage members of our community to complete the survey, and Brian will post that to our website this week. There is just a slide on federal aid, I just wanted to share this with our, certainly our board, who is aware of this, and our school community. These are, these are numbers over time, these are the basic classifications of the federal grants that our school district received over the past few years. I believe it was introduced in 2021, our first presentation to the community on this was July 12, 2021, and we received feedback from our community, and it was resoundingly supportive of investing in clinical professionals and mental health professionals. We were certainly in a more dire time at that point, and those resources and personnel have served us well over their time here. This board has been incredibly responsible to our taxpayers. The due diligence that you've shown and the numbers tell the story, and the numbers tell a story of that balance that we talked about, providing our students with great programming and great opportunities and meeting the needs of all learners. And as I look at those tax rate increases, I certainly am struck by how fiscally responsible our district has been, how respectful our district has been to our school community. STAR is something that I'd just be remiss if I didn't mention. STAR is something that the district does not oversee, we have no control over the STAR checks and the rebate checks and the amount, and whether you're a direct credit or you get a rebate check, that is all determined at the state level, that's not something that we have any input over. We do know the program will continue for the 23-24 school year, and that certainly provides some relief to taxpayers, but I just wanted to make a note that, because there were some changes to the STAR program, and I just wanted to separate the two, the STAR program is independent of our school district. And then finally, the budget is, the budget vote and trustee election is always the third Tuesday in May. So it is scheduled for May 16, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. A few years ago, we made the transition over to French Hill as the poll location that has been successful for us from several perspectives, from a school safety perspective certainly, and in these times, you could never exercise enough care when it comes to school safety. So moving the budget vote to French Hill, I applaud the board for doing that, I thank the board for doing that, and we'll continue that for the budget vote in May. So I'm happy to take any questions, there was a lot of information that was shared, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to, my team and I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank you and your entire team for their hard work, because it's a long budget season, it starts as soon as school starts, so we really appreciate all of your help, and we appreciate all of the presentations that you've given us throughout the winter. Mike, do you have questions?
Questions? I guess I would, you raised the issue of potentially adding another SRO, School Resource Officer, and if the board were to consider that, I guess my question would be, what's the, you know, what's the most appropriate way to figure out how to get that into the budget? So if it's something that the board would like the administration to investigate, what we would do, we're going to stay within the tax cap, that's something that we're certainly committed to doing. So we would look at maybe some of the increases we projected, some of the positions we projected, maybe there are some savings that we can realize, we can look at some contracts that we have, whether it's for services, transportation, whatever the contract may be, and we will do our very best to report back to you on April 10, I believe is our next meeting, which is when the budget adoption is scheduled. We would certainly deliver a presentation with the updates in terms of what we were able to come up with and present that to the board for your consideration at that point.
So is that something that the board, is there consensus that you want the administration to look into, the potential of adding an SRO, to be shared in the elementary schools?
I think yes, and I think Ron clarified the process, which is to kind of, you know, take a look overall where we are, and yeah.
Sure.
Definitely.
Yes, I definitely would like to hear more about it.
Okay. Okay, so there's consensus, if you could come back to us in April with how we could manage to squeeze that in there?
Absolutely. Now, obviously, we're going to have to look for some other cost-saving measures there, so for the community, I just want to convey the tax numbers that I have shared with you. I don't anticipate changing, we are going to stay where we are, and we're just going to look for some offsetting costs or some offsetting or mitigating steps that we can take. Lisa, would you say that that's accurate in terms of keeping the numbers where they are?
Yes, and I'm sorry, excuse me, my voice is...
I'm sorry, excuse me, my voice is hoarse. Yes, we don't anticipate the tax levy cap number changing with the small exception of the state budget. When that comes out on April 1, it could be tweaked slightly. I just want to remind people of that. But other than that, we will either find offsetting costs within the budget or the possibility of appropriating for balance.
Very good. Thank you.
Rashmi, do you have any questions?
Yeah. So Dr. Hatter, I think you raised a good point with the distinction between enrollment and student needs. So while the graph shows that the enrollment is projected just about to, you know, stay flat, but we know that our student needs are changing and are projected to continue to change. So can you elaborate more on that and what you think that data looks like?
Of course. Thank you, and I appreciate you asking that question. We have seen the addition of an 812 class, and that's a smaller class than, when I say 812, those are ratios. Eight students to one teacher to two program teaching assistants. And so although there may be eight students in the class, the resources that are expended to meet the needs of the students, and rightfully so, and we should be expending those resources to meet the needs of our students, would be higher than if I were to have a class of 26 children with one teacher in the room. So we're servicing all of our students. We're doing the best we can to keep our students right here in Yorktown. That's where we want our children to be when we can. And Mike Rosen and his team have done a phenomenal job of keeping our children not just in our district, but within their attendance zone. And so that involves adding programs. So as student needs go up and we add some more of the smaller classes, there are some additional resources that accompany that. There are services that accompany the student needs, whether they're behavioral in nature, whether the needs are academic in nature or social emotional in nature. So although the enrollment numbers are staying flat for the most part, the needs that we're seeing are intensifying. And what I will share, one of the statistics that Mr. Rosen shared in his presentation, I think is noteworthy, and if the community takes something away from my response to Ms. Bose's question, I hope it would be, we have approximately 250 children in a cohort. So we can expect approximately 250 children to come in to kindergarten next year, approximately. We're already over 200. So of the incoming kindergarten children, 70 students have, oh, 77. 77, I'm sorry. I saw the seven, I thought it was 70. So 70, so I stand corrected, 77 students. I knew it was in the 70s. 77 students have a document in hand for CPSE services. Now, that's almost one out of three at this point. That's not any reflection on our school system. That's not speaking to the programs that we have here. But we're going to service all of our students. They deserve that. They deserve the best education we can offer. And so there are some needs there that will certainly make happen in our budget and fulfill within our budget. And as a certified special education teacher and certified math teacher, PPS really holds a dear role, a dear place in my heart, and it's something that I'm certainly committed to, and I know our board has been equally committed, and I know Mr. Rosen, his department, has been just working around the clock. They've been working around the clock. And my team here at the table up front is certainly committed to making sure our student needs are met. So yes, it's a wordy way of saying that as we introduce more smaller classes, as we introduce more services for our students that are mandated, that are required, yes, there are costs that come with those services that we offer, and I thank you for asking that.
Cheryl?
Yes, I'm looking at the slide regarding state aid, and you talked about the QR code for foundation aid and federal grant survey. What are some of the questions that are, that will be asked if you go onto that survey?
Sure. Thank you for asking that. The biggest question, and there are only two or three questions, the third or the final question is just a narrative. It's an open-ended, if there's anything that's not here, please share your opinion. The question prior to that, the more substantive question, gives seven different genres in our organization that we can allocate money to. So people can check all that apply, areas that they would like to see the foundation aid spent, whether it's academics, athletics, English, I'm sorry, not athletics, English is a new language, special education, remedial programs for students, whether it's special education or non-special education remedial programs. So there is a list of about seven items, clinical team members.
Class.
Yep, class size, yep. So those are, I guess you've gone on to the survey at this point. So there are a list of about seven categories that somebody can just check off, and if they don't see the category that's on their mind, or if they want to elaborate on the category there, there's an open-ended response at the end that they can provide their feedback. So it's a very brief survey. We tried to make it as user-friendly as possible so that we get a higher participation rate.
Thank you.
Lisa?
So I'm going to ask the question I think I always ask, but before I do that, I want to thank you, Dr. Hatter, Ms. Sanfilippo, Sammerling, you and your entire team, the ones that are always here every single meeting that are kind of behind the camera. I know that not only do you think about the education, you think about the experience, and that's what goes into this budget, and I really do appreciate that. And Lisa, being your first year, I'm sure it was quite an adventure to get up to speed on Yorktown and how it goes here. So thank you. Lisa, you said that the budget, we should know by the first. We're supposed to adopt this on the 10th. If the budget is not what we, the state budget, I mean, is not what we think it will be, will you quickly rework things and propose a new budget for us, or how will that work?
The short answer is yes. Would you like to start?
So both houses of the legislature have made their proposal. None of them have done anything different with foundation aid than what the governor proposed, so we fully anticipate realizing all of that foundation aid. When I say there's just a caveat, it's really just in the level of building aid. It's kind of technical, it's a calculation in the tax cap. But what we're hearing right now, we don't anticipate any significant changes from the governor's budget. So we do think that all those revenue sources will come to fruition. If not, we'll deal with it. But again, it's small numbers. We're talking tweaking, not major changes.
And should there be a reduction? We don't anticipate it, but should there be a reduction? We're going to have to revisit that list that we provided to the board this evening, and there may be some things that aren't there when we look at this again. And that's a very possible situation. I hope it won't happen, but hope's not a strategy. So I don't anticipate it happening based on how well-received the governor's budget was by the Senate and the Assembly. But should that happen, we're going to have to be prepared to pivot, and we will be prepared to pivot. The good news is that there's a spring break week, so there's plenty of time in those nine days to be able to rework a budget, assuming the budget comes in on time. That's the other piece of this. The board adopts the budget, the budget comes in later, and now we have to kind of rework the adoption at that point to meet the financial reality on the ground.
Yeah, we've been there before.
Yeah.
And you just gave away Lisa's spring break. We heard that too. Okay, I just want to thank you guys. I don't have any specific questions because I've asked them during the courses, these presentations, but in each presentation, you've always stressed the needs of all the students from K to 12, and you've hit the different departments. You've hit music, and you've hit athletics, and you've hit, you know, co-curriculars and academics. And I'm just so thankful that you reach out to all, that it's not just one department that gets everything. So I'm just grateful that you have thought of everything that you can to give our students the best possible experience if they can. So does anybody have any additional questions? All right. So we look forward to your presentation on the 10th.
Yes.
So thank you. This is now our budget. So if anybody has questions as they go through this, send them to me, and I'll get them on to the administration so we can get answers if we need them, okay? Where are we now? We're up to board reports. Cheryl, policy committee.
We had two meetings this month, one on March 2, and that was our regular policy meeting, and another meeting on March 9 to continue our work on the code of conduct. In the regular policy meeting, we reviewed seven policies, and we will meet again on the 28th for the code of conduct and on April 11 for our regular policy meeting.
Thank you. Rashmi, audit committee.
So we have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks after spring break to meet with the internal auditor, to go over their reports and more to come. And I think I said this at the last meeting, we do have a new community member, so he will be joining us as well for that meeting. That's it.
Terrific. Thank you. Mike, fiscal advisory?
Fiscal advisory, we met last Tuesday afternoon, the 21st, I believe it was. We essentially reviewed the presentation that you saw tonight. We looked at the tax cap, where we were going to fall, given the positions that we were looking to fill, and the list of items that Dr. Hatter presented this evening. My guess is we'll also have a discussion about the, how to incorporate the SRO position and where we go from there.
Terrific. Thank you. And as far as steering goes, we met a couple of weeks ago. I know in the meantime, our new architects have walked, if not most of the buildings, all of the buildings at this point, and met with some of the principals. I know one of the projects that we are talking about strongly is parking at Mohansick. It is, there is no parking. We're running out of room. So we have asked the architects, and you'll see it on tonight's agenda, to try to come up with something to alleviate and give us some additional parking for staff over the summer. So that's one of the projects that we're hoping will get done this summer. And we're going to meet again tomorrow, and we'll see where we are. We're now up to board action items. You have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 27, March 6, and March 20 meetings.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion to approve the treasurer's report for February 2023?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion to approve the claims audit report for February 2023?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the extra classroom report for February 2023?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We have budget vote and election resolutions and appointments, and I don't know if you want me to read them. Otherwise, they are A through E.
F.
F? Oh, F, I'm sorry. A through F.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel, there's other compensation, extra duty, additions to the substitute list, unpaid leaves of absence, removal from the substitute list, a CTA resignation under classified personnel, there are civil service appointments, other compensation, extra duties, unpaid leave of absence, additions to the substitute list, or removal from the substitute list, and a teacher aide resignation.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Business office, a motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 22, 23 school year. We have Katona and Somers.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the Mohansick Elementary School parking expansion proposal for Mamasi pursuant to the terms and conditions of the master agreement dated January 24, 2023?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the appointment of Brian Denny, a high school teacher, to the district-wide school safety team for the 2022, 23 school year?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses, a motion to approve the attached resolution to cooperatively bid the general commodities and service bids issued by Putnam Northern Westchester Bowses.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Social ed, a motion to arrange the placements as of March 27, 2023?
Some move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at Crampon, $2,000 from the Crampon PTA for the fifth grade trip to the Island Current Charter, and at Brookside, a field trip to Peter and the Wolf at the Chabacaw Performing Arts Center from the Brookside PTA.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. We're up to board comments. Lisa?
So the presentations tonight were excellent. I love seeing the little kids. I've said this before, that public speaking piece is so important. It's not just standing in front of hundreds of people with a microphone, but it's having the courage to voice what you want to a boss or to a colleague or a friend, and that's where they get that courage from. So I'm just so impressed with how they did, and then taking it up to our seniors, and congratulations, Cheryl. Just what an amazing group of kids. And that's all because we work so hard on this budget. You guys work so hard on this budget and give those kids everything that could be available to them. So thank you for all of that.
Cheryl?
I know tonight wasn't planned to have two schools here tonight, so I thank you for everyone's patience because that was a postponement. However, it was nice to see our bookends. You know, we went from Mohansick to high school, so, and all the wonderful things that happened in between are really a big part of this budget. So, you know, kudos to all of our presenters tonight, but it's really a part of a bigger picture of not only educating the whole child, but making sure all children are represented, and that was really, you know, seen tonight. So yeah, great job for everyone.
Rashmi?
I've already said everything, so I'm good.
Mike?
It's been said, but I do want to thank and congratulate the central administration and the administrators at the building level for all of the hard work and effort that they put into this year's budget. This has been an especially challenging one from a number of standpoints, and I think it was handled extremely well, so thank you for that. And I agree with my colleagues' comments that it was fortuitous seeing the two different schools tonight. We don't hardly ever get that, and it was really a nice way to wrap up the budget season by showing what happens in our schools from beginning to end. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree with everything everybody said, so I won't say it again. I have a question for Yvette. We have the trustee vote and budget election. Has anybody pulled petitions? Do we have a number of petitions?
Nine.
Nine people have pulled petitions. Okay. And when are they due back?
April 7.
April 7, 5:00 p.m. Okay, and that's when you will pull lots. Okay. Thank you.
The next one.
The next one. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. We are up to, oh, Ron, Lisa's, nothing? Okay. We're up to our last public comment. Did anybody sign up? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you, everyone. Good night.